Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of seven particular employees and matters related to three particular students. It's moved by Mrs. O'Leary.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carry seven zero. Thank you. All right. Already running. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're returning from executive session where we discussed the employment history of seven particular employees and matters related to three particular students. Are there any agenda changes?
No.
Yeah. Reports of discussion items, not at this point?
No.
Items requiring production?
No.
Moving on to item six, superintendent comments.
Yes, so we met with the community engagement committee and facilities committee group this week, which was a really nice meeting. And what we do is we have community members from various groups. We have some PTO members and parents, representatives from Rotary, Juana's, Boys and Girls Club, senior citizens on the committee with us. And the purpose is just to share what's happening within the district. And then there's kind of a subpiece to that when we do have a facilities project. And so we spoke about that as well. And so each of the principals and directors shared kind of an update about what was happening in their particular area, which went really well. And then we gave them an update on the fact that we're just kind of kicking off the next facilities project, which we're really grateful for the public support. And it went really well. So really appreciate those people being here because the idea is for them then to step out and share with their groups and get that message out to the greater community. So yeah, it went really well, and so I appreciate everyone being here.
Thank you very much. Moving on to board presidents and board member comments. I'd like to welcome Beth Casey officially as our district clerk. I'm going to offer our retired district clerk, who is kind enough to pass the torch officially. Thank you very much, and welcome officially, Beth. The policy committee meeting met several times since our last meeting and has been working way diligently. We will have some policies up for readings this evening, but I'd like to thank Mr. Russ, Ms. George, Mr. Mambredi, Mr. Cassidy, and Mrs. Daniel for your ongoing hard work. And there's a lot of effort going into getting through the entire manual in short order. And thank you for staying focused, and thank you to the board for your input. It is most valuable, and thank you for everyone's participation. That's all I have this evening. Mrs. O'Leary.
Thank you. I attended the DPC meeting, January 25th, with Mrs. Daniel and Mrs. Inzogna. Pretty much the same normal stuff that we do at every meeting. Field trips are ongoing, teachers' grants are continuing. The one major difference that they said this year is their current accountant is going to be stepping down after this year. So that is something they're going to be looking for as a new accountant for the three PTOs. Because even though there's three separate PTOs, they are one combined PTO when it comes to filing their taxes. And then going to the retreat workshop. The retreat committee met last week, and that was Mrs. Daniel, Mr. Mambredi, and Mrs. Lyons. And what we have as a tentative date, thank you all for responding back to me, is Wednesday, May 31st. That is the proposed date. And it's going to include the board, superintendent, and all the administrators. We haven't built the agenda yet, but we have a tentative focus, which is going to be on self-reflection and team building. We're kind of trying to figure out which focus we should do. Do we do an education focus? Do we do a focus that discusses our goals? We figured because we have so many administrators that are new and we have a new board member, it would be better to focus on team building and self-reflection and personalities and how we communicate and can work well with one another. We also talked about potentially doing either a goal or an information retreat in the fall. But for the one that is tentatively scheduled for May 31st, it's going to be more along the lines of self-reflection and team building. So the committee will, now that we have a tentative date, will meet again and more information will come. And lastly, Mr. Cassidy and I attended the advocacy and legislative breakfast a few weeks ago. And I know you all have probably heard or seen that Ms. Hopple has given her speech about what she could have in the budget concerning education. But I did want to point out a couple of things that the advocacy team is trying to get past. One being supporting the funding of the SRO, continuing supporting of universal pre-K, raise the capital project outlay minimum from the current $100,000 to $250,000, and that they talked about doing last year, and we thought they were going to be doing it last year. Another one, which I thought was really interesting, the electric bus mandate. So they're mandating electric buses, and the cost of an electric bus is going to be over $400,000. So buses, when we go the electric way, luckily we do not have our own buses, are going to be incredibly expensive. But the issue that we're seeing is that we don't have the infrastructure to support them. We don't have the grid, we don't have the infrastructure, the charging stations, any of that stuff, and none of that is being put in the agenda as far as us being reimbursed for that. They just want us to buy the buses and figure the rest out. So we're hoping, they're hoping through advocacy that that's going to at least be pushed back until some of these things can be worked out.
What's the year that they give for that? Do they give a year? It was like 31 or something like that.
Mr. Lowry.
I knew you were going to ask me.
Well, I love the one to Mr. Lowry. I'd like to say belated, welcome to Dave Lowry, who's joining us from ECA this evening. Thank you for being here.
There are two dates. One is where you can't buy any more diesel buses, and the other one's where you got to be totally turned over, and I can't remember the dates offhand.
Isn't it like 31 or something?
I see it's 2030.
Yeah, 1 or something along those lines, so.
It's a ways down the road.
It's a ways down the road.
Not that far. Think about how much they cost.
The other one is the student mental health, and I noticed, and you may also, they're opposing a specific bill that was requiring at least one full-time licensed or qualified social worker in each elementary, intermediate, and high school. And the reason being that it's being opposed is because it does not include funding and does not provide any flexibility. So when I first saw it, I was like, why would they be opposing that? But those are the reasons why they're opposing it. And just two more that they're looking into, increasing the aid, able salary caps for BOSIs. And the other one I just wanted to mention is eliminating individual billing expense reports and eliminating individual billing. So those are all the, some of the key ones that they are trying to advocate for. Maybe any of our seeing in the governor's speech, not all of these are going to, we're going to continue to advocate.
That's it. Thank you. Mrs. Inzogna?
So I went to one of the same meetings, the DPC meeting, where we meet with all of the PTOs and the superintendent. And one of the things that did come out of that, that we began brainstorming, and I think we really need to continue brainstorming as a board and as a community, is they were concerned about some of their information isn't being just disseminated into the community, and some of them, and even though now they have one website type of things, way to get it out, they're not, it's still not reaching everyone. And so that was a concern that they had. And like I said, there was a lot of brainstorming that came up in it, but that's something that we should continue to talk about and continue to figure out. And I know this is an ongoing thing that everyone's working on, but it was still there. So that was one thing that came up. Then we also attended, a few of us attended, the athletic advisory committee meeting, which was my first time going. And basically, we got reports on, we received reports on the building project and how that will affect athletics, as well as ideas concerning the indoor track options. Several ideas were given, and instituting modified field hockey and volleyball. Those were ideas that were presented. The most interesting, not most interesting, sorry, the, one of the good things that I definitely think everyone was on board for and saw happening was that our athletic director has brought in last, for the first sports season, and now for this one, a sports psychologist who is starting off each season speaking to the athletes and parents and about what it is to be a stellar athlete, and the difficulties and such surrounding that. So that was a really positive thing that's happening. The other thing that came out of that meeting, but also a couple of community members had mentioned in and had even written us about, why don't we jump on, or how can we jump on the idea of doing CPR classes, or as a district, what are we doing? And Mr. Lombardo is actually offering for all of his coaches, there is CPR training coming up, and he said that is open to anyone in the community, any, not just the coaches, until it fills up. One of the sessions is already full. It's for recertification of CPR and for initial certification. So that has opened up, and we can get, I have, we can get more information from that. But that does address some of the concerns that the community have. Why don't we, now's the time to see who's interested in that. And it doesn't have to just be our coaches. It can be anyone in the community.
So how would community members get information?
That's what, I don't know. So I have that information, and Mr. Lombardo has posted that to all of the coaches and shared with me as well. So we would just need to ask him how we can, I mean, maybe that's just something we put up on our website. Is that something we could do?
I think we would just ask the superintendent what our options are for that, or have the administrative team get to it.
Yeah, is that, because I think that would be, that would address some of the concerns of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy?
So I just want to add on to the advocacy training before the legislative breakfast. There was a panel discussion by the frontier advocacy committee. It was a member of the school board, it was a parent, and it was two students who all sit on that committee. And they talked about essentially, you know, what they do. The one, the school board member had actually gotten it going because he saw an interest in it, and so he got it running. It was really, it was, it was an interesting discussion to hear, and I had asked O'Leary and said that really since the, since the, what was it, the GEA, way back in those times, there was a lot of advocacy here, but it might have trailed off some. So I thought that an advocacy committee in that way, including parents and students, might be something that would be of interest, not just to the board, but to others as well. I thought that was, I thought that was great. I attended a couple of weeks ago the delegate assembly meeting for Erie County Association of School Boards, where we, we went over so many dates, so many upcoming dates, so many things, including next year's calendar, we reviewed in depth. But just to point out a couple, the awards committee is closing nominations for the, for the organization's awards on March 6th. We have information from, from the organization in our emails on that. That awards ceremony is in June. Coming up immediately, there's a cocktails and dinner with CSI, and I already, I just blanked on the conversation, is around residency.
Residency.
Residency, which sounded interesting. And then, and also coming up on March 25th is the prospective school board member workshop. And then came the round robin, which I just think, I love listening to the representatives from different school boards and what they mentioned. So I highlighted just a couple, a few that I wanted to point out. Williamsville, the representative, talked about, I believe it was in their elementary school, where the technology department helped the teachers, essentially for the teacher conferences, they recorded little videos of the kids, and then outside, under their pictures, they had a QR code that they could scan, the parents could scan while they were waiting to go in and watch a little video from the kids, which I was just like, wow, yeah, that was, that was pretty cool. Springville, I mentioned that they had found enough surplus in their lunch fund that they are able to offer the district free breakfast and lunch for the rest of the year, which I thought was pretty spectacular, since on a statewide, there's really, there hasn't been movement with adopting universal meal feeding, so. And then last, this one sounded kind of familiar. Kenton talked about a bus tour of the community. But this one, while they do it for, internally for staff, this was for the, for the community. So it was, it was popular, popular, and somebody caught one of it, and they decided that they were going to open it up to community members, and they do a breakfast afterwards. But the spots filled up just very quickly. So I don't know, Mr. Brunson, there might be an opportunity for.
Well, years ago, when I was active in community education, that would have been an ideal one to put on the list.
Yeah.
With all the historic spots we've got.
Yeah.
It's not only a fun tour, it's informative.
Yeah, and so I thought, I thought that was kind of cool. Last thing I'll mention is on, I don't know, some night, they're all a blur, I attended the ACES 10th anniversary meeting slash celebration, ACES being local environmental group here in town. And it was great. It was great to hear everything that they were talking about, but I was especially thrilled to see Jeff Shelley there with one of his students and giving an update on all of the great things that the district has been doing, the steps that they've been taking, and I thought, I thought that was fantastic.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lowry?
What are you doing?
Thank you for being here. Mr. Brunson?
Thank you, yes. I attended, along with Ms. Daniel, the reading of the finance and budget committee for this month. And we'd like to thank Ms. George for providing us really good early information to begin the process of preparing the budget. And so for this particular meeting, one of the things we had to look at was projections regarding the BOSIs expenditures for the upcoming several years. And the good news is it looks like from the projections that we're thinking about early on, that we see no significant increase this year or next year, perhaps even a slight decrease, but, but basically it's flat. And that, that's good, because there have been times when that's gone up quite substantially. And although we do receive reimbursement for, with the BOSIs aid, it's, it's still, you have to front the money. So it's, it's good to be able to get that under control. The, the numbers we're looking at are early projections, so it's, it's not something you want to hang your hat on right now, but, but it's very helpful in planning for the future. The second thing we looked at were salaries. When you think about a budget as large as ours, the major portion of it is salaries. And so, so if we can get a handle on salaries, that's early on, that, that's a good way to make sure that we've, we've got the budget under control. And, you know, interestingly, along the same lines, Joanne gave us a printout from an article that appeared in the School Business Officials newsletter, inflation will put districts in a pickle. And, and of course, the, the main concern, they point out in this article, is salaries. So the, the good news for our district is we have agreed upon signed contracts with all of our organizations that are multi-year contracts. And so we, as we're planning for next year's budget, and the year after, and the year after that, we can project salaries pretty accurately because the contracts have already been agreed. Now, obviously, there's some changes because there's some additional staff leave, people come. So it's not, it's not an exact science, but I think we've got a good handle on the future, the near-term future of several years with regard to not being put in a pickle, according to this. The, we've also looked at the retirement systems contributions. That's the largest cost associated with employment, the largest fringe benefit, that and health insurance. So the, and, and the good news with regard to the retirement system is that that seems to be flattening out as well. It may even be a slight decrease next year in the percentage that the, that they're projecting a small decrease in the percentage. But a small decrease, even a half percent decrease, is tens of thousands of dollars for us because of, because it's on the entire salary schedule. So it's, it's a big savings. The other thing we looked at was revenues, and we had some early projections from the state with regard to the state aid runs. But since our meeting, we now have very accurate aid runs published by the governor as, as part of Governor Hopple's budget. And so are we going to be talking about that a little later? So I won't go into that any further at this point because it'll be part of the budget presentation tonight. But that's, that's what we're kind of looking at on the finance committee and budget committee, is to try to get a handle on these large numbers early on so that they don't come as a surprise to us in, in April and May. And we appreciate the business office's help in making that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
I only have one thing to add. Thank you, everyone, for summarizing all of the various committees. Just on our athletic advisory committee, we did have a guest report from someone on modified lacrosse and the potential of adding modified lacrosse. So that was something that we had at the beginning of our discussion. So I'm all set. Thank you.
May I have one more? We've discussed, we've discussed so many times the, our concern for, about student lunches and breakfast and all of that. And I did see, it's come up numerous times in the last couple of months in our week or daily, every day we get them, the NISP clips, that there is an advocacy for. And if you're interested in that, I can, I can forward you that, and it's who to write to and, and how to get behind that, if that's something, because a few of us have been really concerned about that. So I'll forward that to the board if you're interested.
And kudos to the Springville Griffith Institute School Board for, for taking the bull by the horns on that one. And the concern is for the children who can't afford it and who don't fill out the forms necessary to.
Thank you. Are there any administrators who would address the board this evening? Thank you all for being here.
No visitor comments.
Oh, and we have no visitor comment cards this evening. I will remind the board that we received an email from Western New York Literacy Collective about a screening for our theater, and from Chris Heckman about the invitation to the induction ceremony for Hall of Fame. Did you receive your email? Thank you very much. No one wishes to address the board this evening? Thank you very much for being here. Moving on to item 10, reports and discussion items. We have the math curriculum.
Excellent.
Jenny Kibler is the K-4 Math Curriculum Leader, and she unfortunately was ill tonight, so I'm going to pinch-hit for her for K-4. Mary Beth Ritchie is the 9-12 Math Coordinator, and Melanie Ozak is new to 5-8 last couple of years. She's the middle school math coordinator. So Mary Beth will start us off. I'll take over for K-4. We'll do Melanie Ozak in 5-8, and then Mary Beth will do 9-12.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight and listening to our presentation. I wanted to first of all go over the purpose and philosophy of the math department going from K through 12. So our K through 12 math progression is all centered around the Common Core standards for the mathematical practice. We will be switching very soon over to the next generation standards. So Common Core is coming to an end. Our values of learning excellence, respectful relationships, effective communication, and continuous improvement through expl, through exploration, innovation, growth, and opportunity, of course, is very prevalent in the math department as well. This is just a list of the Common Core standards for mathematical practices. So when teachers are setting up activities and lessons, these are the practices that we try to focus our attention on, and this is, you know, the state list of mathematical practices. I'll let you take a look.
And for anybody who's new to these, all, we have about 22 departments, kindergarten through 12th grade, the core subjects, and then the special areas. And every department undergoes a comprehensive review every five years. So this year happens to just be math. Next year, it's just social studies. Last year, it was department. So every five years, they have a, an opportunity to really take a comprehensive view at like what they teach and how they're teaching it, what's going well, and what could use some improvements. So this is where these presentations come from. And then for the next five years, we work on any needs or recommendations, which you will see in our presentation today. So Jenny Kibler's been the math coordinator for as long as I can, I remember. She's really good at it. There's 12 teachers. It's a K-4 Math Curriculum Team. And we try to pick two teachers from each grade level for math in ELA, and that's where the 12 teachers come from. And they meet once a month, and they represent all 41 math teachers, which is basically on Teacher Parkdale plus the AIS teachers. A quick overview of the curriculum that we've been using for a very long time are the Engage New York Math Modules. Students in, at Parkdale have math for at least 60 minutes a day, built into their daily schedule. And then at intervention, each grade level has 40-minute intervention blocks, so students might receive math AIS during that time, or classroom intervention for math during that 40-minute intervention time. And for assessments and screenings, the Engage New York Math Modules have assessments after each, each module, plus we give the building-wide Ames Web Benchmark Screening three times a year because we are in trimesters at Parkdale. Wrong way. Some highlights from the math department, the, we've done a lot, we did this in probably October, I would, I think it was. We did a lot of data analysis for grades, the, from the spring assessments for grades three and four. The math teachers got together, we went through the assessment in depth, and we looked at how students did, we looked where there was gaps in responses within East Aurora. We didn't do too much comparing outside, it was more within our, our own student population. And then Jenny brought that data back to the math team as a whole to talk about where we could instructionally fill in some of those gap areas. Grade level AIS team data meetings, they meet three times a year at the grade level. Right now is actually the data team meeting season, and at those data meetings, we kind of talk about what kids can need to go into AIS, what kids can come out of AIS, and maybe go on classroom intervention. We have co-talk classes at every grade level, our student support team, and then our K-4 students have one-click access to some supplementary online programs that we're using this year, Freckle and First in Math Accounts. So it really just, we might use it during intervention, or if they finish something early in math, it tailors to wherever their weaknesses are. They'll start doing, they'll work on either of those two, and whatever problems they're getting incorrect, you'll give them some more of it or some reinforcement in those areas. Couple other highlights, Jenny runs some, Ms. Kibler, I don't know. Runs some school-wide math, there's some students in here, might have had her. There's some school-wide math challenges that she does, some holiday challenges, some around the Christmas time, some elf math. If you go at Parkdale outside of her classroom, there's always something on the walls for some challenge that she's running. We have steam night every other year, and then we've been doing a lot of networking between districts. There's math forums, I know you attend the math forums. Okay, Melanie attends them, and then Mrs. Barron at Parkdale. Okay, Melanie attends them, and then Mrs. Barron at Parkdale attends them for, for Parkdale. And it's a great, great place to see what other districts are doing, what other ideas they have, and just to get outside of the bubble of East Aurora and see what else is going on. The Teacher Center, a lot of our teachers take classes for K-4 math through the Teacher Center. And then virtual and in-person workshops and conferences that come up, our teachers do attend those, too. Some professional development. She went way back here, 1920. While we're, they're focusing on the next generation, we started focusing on the next generation math standards and getting ready for them, building capacity and awareness around those. For the, during COVID, we really worked on enhancing the pacing guides K-4, making sure everybody was on track, were on the same page at the same time, similar, so we can give those common assessments at the same time. This year, we've had Lisa Stonefoot, who's a math specialist at Bosse's. We've, I think she came in today, actually. She's been in a few times to do some training sessions on these topics here. For, what she does, she'll come in and she'll talk to the math articulation team, and then they'll disseminate it to their groups. And the program review began in 18, 19 to 20. We compiled the list of other programs that were used in local districts. I remember this because I was there then, but we did kind of go out and see what other districts are using. We actually visited a couple of schools who were using Envision 2020. Then at that time, we did, they determined that the modules were, they best met our needs, and we weren't going to change, this was five years ago now, we weren't going to change anything. And this year, there's, it's still in progress, we don't have an answer tonight, but they are looking at a brand-new program. It's called Eureka Squared. You like that? Play on squared. And it's the short version of it. It's an updated version of the modules that meet the new standards. It's more kid-friendly, online versions, more activities to do. If you've seen the New York State modules, they're, I mean, they're great instructionally, but they're pretty bland and dry and black and white. So we're, they've been doing a lot of work around deciding if they want to move in this direction. We've had the company in. We've met as a math articulation team, really studying the pros and cons. She did a presentation for all of the Parkdale teachers. So we're going to continue that this year, and then they'll be able to make a recommendation if they want to move forward in moving to this Eureka Squared or taking next year to maybe highlight Eureka Squared. So we'll have an update in a little bit, but that's where we're headed as of right now. Needs and recommendations. The articulation team just wants to make sure any new teachers that either come to Parkdale or switch grade levels do have training in the math modules or whatever program we do decide to adopt if we do adopt a new program. Continuing the training sessions with Bosse's at Parkdale, having time to work on curriculum initiatives, when time is what I need, or summer curriculum hours. And then they're going to continue the review of the current program versus this new one they're looking at. And then, of course, maintain that 60 minutes of math instruction per day. Sure. Do you have questions for Parkdale? Yeah, I'll try.
So you have systems in place to, for, if you need to ask for help.
Yep.
What about students who are moving faster than the curriculum is offered? What is in place for them?
We're working on that, too. A separate, kind of a little bit of a separate project that I'm working on during intervention time, which we're working with a special, a professional development specialist who are trying to look at that intervention time and what can we do for, there's kids in pre-AIS, there's kids in classroom intervention, but there's also the gifted kids. So looking at different ways to utilize the six teachers in a grade level to maybe take the couple of kids from each classroom that are excelling in math or ELA or whatever it might be, and having them as a separate group to give them a little extra enrichment during that time. On top of whatever the classroom teachers during, doing their own differentiation time during instruction. Any other questions for K-4?
I know this is just off the top of my head, but the, the Governor Hochul's budget proposal includes a pullout of foundation aid for the purpose of tutoring at grades K through 8. For us, it's over $100,000. Do you have any initial thoughts, any of you, about such a program?
No. So I think it's 3 through 8, not K through 8.
Oh, is it 3 through 8?
It's 3 through 8. And we've just, because we just found out about it like last week, we've just started having some discussions. We had some discussions about it today. I think it's a little bit too soon. We don't really have a plan, but we are discussing it.
Thank you.
I love the same. Part of that is we've used a lot of terms in her proposal, and they never define those terms yet. So we need some definition collect work, whereas on top of this we can be, but they kind of put some bigger words around it, but doesn't, doesn't give us the guidance we need to make sure we're.
Sure. Yeah, my, my only thought was your perception of the need. In other words, I, I realize that the program will have to be developed if there is one, but, but it's, the real question is, are the third, do the third graders through eighth graders in your perception need tutoring?
I think what we've talked about. Go ahead.
No, I, I would say that, you know, looking at our data and as we do our second data cycle, we're seeing students that are making progress and doing really well. What we really want to get into is dive into particular interventions that focus in smaller groups. Right now, we're growing kids, but getting to the smaller group where some of our students that are, have, are showing some of that gap will help us eliminate the gap.
Well, that's starting to sound a little bit like tutoring.
Exactly. We just had a conversation today on our data, and as Jessica said today, we're actually just starting our data. Our first and second graders went this week. Our third and fourth graders will be going next week. So we'll be looking at that definitely with a fine home.
Thank you.
And it, it would be nice if the governor told us that this was something that would continue year after year. So whether we know we're planning for a one-year program and what we can do with that funding for one year, or if it's something that we can continue beyond that, similar to the COVID grants.
Well, it's not new money. It's, it's the, it's the money we were going to get anyway.
Right. But it's repurposed.
So it's a pullout from that. And yeah, and the question is, will that requirement continue from year to year?
Exactly.
We will get the money from year to year. It wasn't that, because it's a change in the foundation aid, but, but whether or not the requirement for tutoring is a, a short-term fix or something that would go on forever is still up in the air.
Up in the air. Yep.
Oh, to the previous question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Daniel would like to do a little play.
I do. Yeah. Okay. So you get the, the learners that are moving quicker through the math program. So you want to set up a group. You wouldn't be teaching them the subject that's in the next grade level, though? Somehow you would enhance what you're worried about teaching them? I'm just trying to figure out how that works.
My pie in the sky, like, view of what intervention time would look like is, yes, if you have, maybe there's one kid in one fourth-grade class and two another and three another, you would take that group of kids and you might, maybe you'll pre-teach them something that's coming up. Maybe you'll expand on what they already learned, but it's not in the curriculum. So maybe it is fifth grade, some fifth-grade material. Something a little more challenging if you're talking about math concepts. You know, ELA, maybe you're going to read a novel that's a Level Z reading level because they're way ahead of that, and you're going to do some more comprehension questions. So it really depends on the subject. Yeah, you might start to pre-teach them something that they're going to learn in the next grade level.
They wouldn't get bored at that point, then, would they? Would they go into class?
Yeah. Or do some challenging, maybe like for math, you could do Mensa puzzles or something. You know, they just, they'd like to stimulate that brain stimulation. Maybe it's not even related to the curriculum. It's math-related, but something more like problem-solving. Yeah.
Oh. Sorry, cut it in.
No, not at all.
Which would be, which is what many of the original gifted and talented programs did.
Yep.
Mrs. Daniel. I was just going to say, if we, if we don't stay with Engage New York, is Eureka Squared the only option? Or would we, you know, what, what are we doing at this point? Have you narrowed it down just to that program?
Yes, we looked at a couple. I don't know the exact names of them, but there were some other ones out there that they did look at, and they really narrowed it on Eureka Squared. I, I've not, for the reasons I had said before, but they did look at other ones. That's what they've narrowed down to at this point in the year.
And so if they don't, oh, I'm sorry. And Eureka math is aligned with the New York State modules. This is just an updated version with the new standards in mind, the Eureka Squared. Yeah. So you seem to be leaning towards that as opposed to the Engage New York.
They're very, very similar.
It's kind of a different name and maybe a little bit more kid-friendly. Like, that's really.
I think that's where it is. It's kid-friendly, and there's a few more supplemental supports to it, resources that you can utilize within your classroom workshop model, differentiate them from.
So they're really very similar to what, what you're doing now. That's what I just wanted to.
Moved around a little bit, or pieces of modules are moved around, and it's more kid-friendly. And Ms. Kibler's really trying to do diligence and gathering input from, I mean, everybody at Parkdale teaches math. It's not just a seven-person department. So she, that's taking time, too, to get everybody's input and then go back to their teams and then offer this for everybody. So I would say at this point, they are leaning a little more towards Eureka Squared. They just, they have some more data set up to continue exploring it.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, what I heard, what I heard of your concern was, are we making a major shift in math?
No.
And it sounds like it's.
No, not at all. We're going to just make math even better. Yes. And this is a brand-new program. I think it came out less than a year ago. So we don't have a lot of other schools to look at and see how it's going so far. So that's another thing why we're taking our time. What we did even talk about, if we do decide to move forward, maybe we'll just pilot it next year. A couple of teachers will. Just let's see, warm up the kinks before we dive right in. Thank you for your questions.
I'll just say, one, one more comment is, I don't know if you remember when the modules first came out.
I wasn't here.
It was a disaster. And the department did an incredible job evaluating and, and refining and creating assessments and just tons of support materials. That's, that's how many years ago, Mary Beth?
It's hard for me to say. It was different.
Oh, yeah, right.
We were 2014.
Yeah. So it was a while ago, but it was really, really, really difficult, and, and they spent a lot of time working on it and creating a program that really worked for our kids. So I appreciate it, yeah.
Well, math curriculum has been, to say the least, controversial. There's been, through my time, four or five iterations of completely different approaches. But hopefully we're stabilizing. It sounds like we are from what you said.
But I, I do have a number of my friends have asked me over here, what's up with this new math stuff?
Yeah.
None of my neighbors helped over for me to work with that. They couldn't help them. They go, go to Mr. Russ's house, he'll help you out.
Send him to SED.
I did. I helped, we figured it out.
But you have to hope that when those children have children, that change again. So they will be able to help there.
That makes it more fun for parents. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Melanie.
Hi. So I'm the curriculum coordinator for 5 through 8. And, oh, I'm going the wrong way. Oh, it, it's, okay, I'm sorry. So I want to talk about fifth grade separately than sixth through eight. We, this year is new. We now have a 60-minute block for math, and it's really been a game changer. As our fifth-grade math teacher has said, there's so much more time to discuss the homework and do daily reviews, warm-up questions and that kind of thing. They have the ability not to work hands-on activities and games, a lot of different K-game and cooperative learning strategies, additional practice time repetition, additional time to spend on more problems and applications that they wouldn't have otherwise had. And then it also allows for a slower pace and more in-depth learning. So we now have three math teachers, and just, just having that extra time that they didn't have last year has been, been really well. Good. For sixth through eight, we have 40-minute class periods, but we also have a math study hall. So our math teachers are available then for students to come sign up and get extra help. It's really great how full those study halls get because those kids, they want to be there and they want to get that extra help. We have, at the sixth-grade level, they are doing daily and weekly spiral reviews with their classes. And this year, we have co-taught, this year and last year, we have AIS classes at each grade level, and then one special ed co-taught class. And then we have our accelerated for the seventh and eighth grade with Pre-Algebra. So some department highlights, just with, the same as with K-4, we do a day-to-day back in October. We do it at each grade level where we sit down and look at our students' data and see which questions they missed and where we can improve things for next year so that we're making sure that they're getting those questions correct. Again, as I said, with the three co-taught math classes, math study hall, math club, Mrs. Head is the advisor for math club, and you should see those kids on Friday learning how to do a Rubik's Cube. It's amazing to get them so excited about math. And we also have the ability to co-plan during the day. We have two eighth-grade math teachers. Myself is the AIS provider and a special ed math teacher. We're together and co-plan so that we're doing the same things relatively on the same Some areas of need, we are reviewing building-based student programs. Right now, we use FastBridge three times a year to determine if students need AIS services or extra help with math. And we really, we like it, but it is missing some things. So we are looking into iExcel and iReady, which are programs other schools are using. We haven't really made any decisions yet. We're still kind of feeling it out. Some of them lack components. There, there doesn't seem to be like one package that has everything we're looking for. So we're just going to continue to look into that. And we'd like to work with the high school to get entrance for accelerated and to maintain students staying in an accelerated program. But we'd like to work together so that that's the cohesive process of work. We'd really like to continue to have co-planning time for co-teachers. We did a great co-teacher training this summer, and we've gotten time after school to work together and plan. And also this summer, we came up with the next-gen standards. We sat down and created curriculum maps and pacing guides for 5 through 8. We'd like advanced training on decimals. It's a screen-based math program that allows students to work on their Chromebook and in real time. It shows up on the teacher dashboard. They can write on the screen, they can type, they can graph. It's, there's all these activity builders that can really help with that discovery learning piece where the students are actively investigating and learning the math. And then we'd like to continue our AIS support of having those two co-taught classes at each grade level that extra skills, AIS time.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. One thing that was mentioned in a couple of community meetings I was at, DPC Community Engagement recently, was parents being notified earlier about the potential for the acceleration math in eighth grade. And Mr. Brown has done a wonderful job getting that information out, but the request was, and the comments were, could it even get out earlier? Like perhaps when it goes, when a student goes from fourth grade to fifth grade, so the parents can start thinking about it as they're going into the middle school. So they're not just hearing about it in sixth grade, they're thinking about it in end of fourth grade, going into fifth grade, and hearing about it again in sixth grade. So then they're not, so no one is being left behind or no one, so all the parents have the information that is needed. Again, it boils down to the communication that the parents were requesting.
Yeah, decision is made in sixth grade, but we've talked about making some sort of brochure or something to give to fifth graders that these are your options. You can be accelerated in math starting in seventh grade, you can be accelerated in science already in eighth grade. And if you are, then this would be your, be your pathway up through 12th grade.
Right. Yeah. Especially for the students who may, maybe I don't care. Oh, but if there's an opportunity to do this, I will care.
Yeah. Mrs. Daniel?
Oh, I was going to say, as a follow-up to that, how, what is the percentage of students that we have now currently in pre-algebra and, and algebra in eighth grade as compared to the rest of the class? Because I know, I guess the reason I say this is, in the past, we've talked about trying to open this up to more students because it used to be a, a smaller group of students. So I'm just trying to understand now where we're at with that.
So there's two pre-algebra classes out, and then there's four regular math seventh classes, and then there's two algebra classes.
Okay. And, and the students are selected by the teachers by a recommendation? Or how does that work?
Can we jump in and explain?
Yeah.
Yeah. So our sixth-grade math teachers make the recommendation based on fifth-grade final average, sixth-grade first, second, and third quarter. So, and then we also look at team input as far as work ethic. Like, it's not just based on the average, it's based on a number of things. We look at test scores, we look at FastBridge, we look at everything. And what we typically do is we, we create a cutoff, and it's usually in the low to the 90s, 93-ish percent. And... And we have those, you know, list of students that that recommendation comes from. And then we always leave openings. And our philosophy has been that if a student wants to get in, hasn't necessarily reached that level, then we've always been able to work it out where we let that student in. One communication I have with parents, though, is I want to hear from the student, not necessarily from the parent. I want the student to come in and explain to me, this is why I want to be in this class. And we sit down and we talk about the rigor, you know, the, some of the challenges that could come from this class. And for all of those students, we give them about a five-to-10-week trial run. And we just go back and through our committees, we look to see how they're doing. And, you know, if they're holding their own, then everything works out. And there are some adjustments. You know, every year, we have a few students where they realize or realize it's not the right fit. And then we also have some students who we realize after the first quarter, they should have been in. Mrs. Head, the seventh-grade teacher, sometimes will be like, wow, this student should have been in pre-algebra. So we'll go ahead and we'll move that student into pre-algebra.
That's great to hear.
So it's not like a perfect science.
Right.
It seems to work pretty well.
Right, and as we've talked about, you know, at the board table, obviously, it opens up different opportunities depending where you are and what you're doing for math. So we want to make sure that we capture as many of these students that want to participate and are able and capable to do that. So I just wanted to have that discussion. Thank you.
Sometimes it's hard to see, too, that it's not just a one-year decision. So a student may do absolutely fine in eighth-grade algebra. And then they come up to the high school and sometimes we're surprised, you know, oh, this student really is doing well and should have probably been accelerated versus this student really is struggling. Once they earn two letters in geometry, algebra two, you know, once we get to pre-calculus, you know, they're taking very rigorous courses then when they get to the high school as well. So we want to make sure that the students, you know, that are selected, realize that it's not just that, you know, they're going into eighth-grade algebra. They're going to be looking at, you know, four years ahead of that, too.
Thank you. A few years ago, Mr. Brown will remember this, the school board added some staff in math at the middle school level in order to address the needs at that particular time. The result was smaller class sizes in fifth through eighth grade. It was my recollection, it was in, I'm not sure it was every one of those grade levels, but it was certainly middle school. So my question is, does that additional staff still exist? And what is the approximate class size for mathematics classes at the middle school?
So it does still exist. And what we did is, a few years ago, we had one AIS math teacher that was fifth through eighth grade. So what we did is we created a fifth and sixth-grade AIS math teacher and a seventh and eighth grade. So we split that up. And then, for example, Melanie, who teaches AIS, she, some years, depending on the enrollment, then teaches like a math seven class, which lowers the.
That's the part I remember.
Exactly. So it does both things. And yes, we still have it. The class sizes vary. We have some classes that have as low as 15 or 16 students, the way the schedule works out. And then we have others that have 24, 25. I don't know, Melanie, if you want to say.
Yeah, I would say that's about, that's about right. My biggest class is 23, my smallest class is 15.
Yeah, it's, I realize how difficult it is when you're doing a schedule at a secondary level to keep all the classes equivalent. It's much easier at the elementary level where you can just make sure that we're all within one student. So I just want to be sure that you have adequate staffing to keep those class sizes small enough for you to be able to give the individual attention that students who are struggling need. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jess, I just have one more follow-up that goes. Could you just explain, you said under the areas for need and recommendation, your second one was work with high school to determine criteria for entrance and maintaining placement in accelerated math. Could you just explain that a little bit more, what you mean by that?
I think just. Maybe. Yeah, I think. My part of it, I think, will continue on to that. So I'm Mary Beth Ritchie, the high school math department chairperson. First of all, we are a seven-person department. So we've actually gone up from, I think, 5.5 to almost seven full-time at the high school. Megan does travel between the middle school and the high school, so she is in both buildings. In addition to our seven-member department, we are also so lucky to have two dedicated math special ed teachers. So when I last gave this curriculum review six years ago, we did not have any math special ed teachers that worked with us. So we are absolutely thrilled that we have that ability now. I forgot to talk about this. All high school students must successfully complete three math courses in order to get their diploma. In order to get an Advanced Regents diploma, those three courses have to be Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, as well as the Regents exam that goes with them. We like to say that we have a lot of students taking a fourth year of math, but you'll see in a few minutes, that number has declined a lot. So we do want to focus on that, and that's in conjunction with that decision about who gets accelerated. This is just a mapping of all of the courses that we have available from ninth grade to 10th, 11th, and 12th. In the ninth-grade level, we do have three courses that students can take. Intro to algebra is for the students who aren't quite ready for algebra. So they've experienced some difficulty in eighth grade. And we like to give them an extra year to really get ready for algebra, since algebra is a graduation requirement. Regents Algebra I is where the majority of the freshmen will be. And then any student who did take algebra in eighth grade will be in Regents Geometry. Our STEM program goes right along with this. So students who choose the STEM program, it's a geometry course, but it's at a little bit higher level. It's called the Analytical Geometry. So it is a little bit different curriculum, but obviously, they will take the Regents exam at the end as well. For our 10th graders, an accelerated student, oh, I'm sorry, a student who took Intro to Algebra will then take Algebra as a sophomore. Any student who took Algebra has two different places to go. If there is a student who took Algebra and experienced difficulty in Algebra, we have an Applied Geometry course. And again, since our last time that we did curriculum review, this is a newly-written course. We used to call it Geometry Prep, and we literally sat down over one of the summers, probably about four or five years ago, and made this more of an Applied Geometry course. So they do a lot of projects based on the geometry curriculum. They do not take the Regents exam at the end, but we try to give them more of a sense of where they will see geometry in real life, building things, mapping. Right now, Greg Stone teaches that. And he and one of the special ed teachers got together four years ago and wrote the curriculum for that and just did a phenomenal job. So we're seeing a lot of success with those students because they can then go on to Regents Geometry if they so choose as a junior. The majority of our students go from Algebra II Geometry. And we also have, for the accelerated students, Regents Algebra II. For the STEM students, this is also Regents Algebra II. Again, at a slightly higher level than our basic Algebra II courses. For the juniors, again, depending on what their path was, that Applied Geometry course could be a course for juniors. Regents Geometry, for anybody who either took Algebra or Applied Geometry, they can move into Regents Geometry. Intermediate Algebra is a course that we have that is slightly lower level than Algebra II. It doesn't end with a Regents exam, but it is a really good third-year course for students because, again, everyone has to pass three years of high school math. Our on-track students will be taking Regents Algebra II. And we have, in addition, for the accelerated students, Pre-Calculus and AP Statistics. AP Statistics is a course that we often recommend for the really strong students. They can take Pre-Calculus and AP Stats at the same time. Once they get to be seniors, some of our seniors are in that intermediate algebra course. Some seniors are just taking Regents Algebra II at that point. Again, the Regents Algebra II is a requirement for the Advanced Regents diploma. So we do still have seniors that end up taking that course so that they can qualify for the Advanced Regents diploma. A new course since the last time we did review is called Algebra in the Real World. That's possible for the students to get SUNY credit. So it's done through ECC. Josh Dubay is teaching that right now. And it's more of a hands-on course, teaching about where algebra, at the level of, between Algebra II and Pre-Calculus. So a student who has finished Algebra II can move into Algebra in the Real World in lieu of going to Pre-Calculus. Or they can go to Pre-Calculus. AP Statistics is still an option. And then AP Calculus would be the course that students who are in Pre-Calculus, as juniors, would end up in as a senior. Some of our senior calculus people are here tonight. Good to see. So some of the highlights, number one, I can't say enough, the collaboration with the special ed department. We are co-teaching courses now in Intro to Algebra, Algebra I Regents, Applied Geometry, Geometry Regents, and Intermediate Algebra. So this is more than we have ever been able to have co-teaching between the special ed teachers that are math-certified and the math teachers. So it is phenomenal. Algebra Lab and AIS math classes. Algebra Lab is something that we started about five years ago. Because algebra is a required course for everybody, we added, instead of an AIS for those students, Candy O'Vine and I sat down and made Algebra Lab so that students who are in algebra, regular, normal, one period a day, every other day, come to Algebra Lab. I'm teaching that again this year. So what I do with that is activities to build their foundational skills, whatever they are working on in algebra class. I make sure that we are doing practice problems. I can answer any questions that they have about, you know, oh, it went kind of quick in class. I'm not quite sure, you know, what Mr. Dubay or Mr. Heiser was saying, you know, can you clear it up? And we can spend a little bit more time, it's very small. I have three students in one section and six students in another. They honestly enjoy coming. It's a little small, it's a fun kind of family atmosphere. Very often, I pre-teach as well, you know, something that I know they're going to be having, you know, in the next day or two. I try to go over before they do it so that when they're in class, they feel like you're more confident to answer questions and know that they're on the right track. AIS math classes, we now, within the math department, are teaching AIS. So we have two teachers that have sections of AIS. AIS classes are every other day, so again, three days out of six. They're offered for any students that could benefit from any extra practice reinforcement. We try to get recommendations from the middle school, from the counselors, from previous teachers about which students would benefit from that. But we also, at this time of the year, for example, during midterm time, we'll take a look at a student's schedule and say, you know what, we would really love to put this student in AIS. So if it's possible in their schedule, we do add them whenever possible. The co-curricular four-year STEM program, collaboration with the Science and Technology Departments. We're trying to build that again. We've had the STEM program for many years, I'm thinking about 15, 16 years. And we are seeing a little bit of a decline in the number of students who are choosing the STEM program or who stay with the STEM program. Last week, we asked the eighth-grade teachers if they would like to bring the students who are interested in STEM up to visit and have a visit day in our STEM classes. 29 students come from the middle school. It was a whole lot of fun. We did enrichment activities, we had a chemistry demonstration, and we did a computer programming activity with them. And hopefully, that will entice them to join us in the STEM program. Some of the highlights, we continue to try to create classes at all levels for all levels of students. So for example, adding that Algebra in the Real World course was a really nice supplement to, you know, our senior-level classes of Pre-Calculus and Calculus and Statistics. College credit can be earned through SUNY with Algebra in the Real World. And advanced placement credit for AP Statistics and AP Calculus. Math League is just our fun thing. Once a month, there's Math League competition, extracurricular. And we also participate in the Math and Science Challenge at SUNY Fredonia in May every year. Just some pictures of people have, of students having a great time doing math. So this is a picture from Mr. Stone's class. He brought the students outside and they were doing constructions with chalk on the driveways. We've got a lot of whiteboard activities, calculator activities happening. We've got our Pringle Ringel that we built in enrichment class. STEM has an enrichment period one day out of sets for the sophomores. And this is a picture of our freshman STEM group having some constructions. And Mrs. Sanders. Areas of concern, obviously, as is, he's in all courses, student learning lost due to the pandemic. The percentage of students that are completing four years of high school math has declined since our last review. We'll, you know, take a look at the numbers of students that we have in all of our senior-level classes, and it has gone down pretty dramatically. We're hoping that it's going to bounce back up once they feel a little bit more confident after the pandemic issues. But I've got to say, I am enjoying having a little bit smaller calculus classes this year. So I've got this year, two, one class of 15 and one 14. Whereas in the past, I've had years of two and three sections of 25 to 30 students. So it is pretty dramatic. But, you know, that's just AP Calculus. Our Pre-Calculus is also showing a decline. So we really, really are trying to encourage students to take four years of math. We struggle with the shared planning time. So students, or I'm sorry, teachers who all teach Algebra II or all teach Pre-Calculus don't really have time during the day. It's very difficult to schedule. That is something that is a little bit more difficult. There really are not textbooks that we can use because of going from Common Core to Next Generation Centers. Some of the textbook companies are coming out with new programs now that we will have next generation. But we're at the point where most of our course materials are teacher-created. So, you know, we have just limited textbook resources. Not to say that it's a bad thing, we are able to get a lot of things online. We use Math and Decmos and a lot of the programs, you know, that are available to us. Number of students participating in the STEM program has also declined. We did see a little bit of an increase, the freshmen, there are 12 in the freshman program. And as I said, we tried to do a fun enticement last week, getting them to come and visit from the middle school. So one of our recommendations is collaboration between the middle school and the high school to identify which students should be accelerated and which students would benefit from the STEM program as well. We like to have time during the conference days, and we have seen this. So we'd like to continue to have that time during conference days to be able to collaborate, both within our department and also with the middle school department. We want to continue to encourage students to pursue four years of high school math. And again, we would like to, you know, a lot of students are going into technology or STEM or education or even medicine, you know, a lot of courses like that. And yet, sometimes they really don't understand. We like the fact that we have the Algebra Lab and the Math AIS programs. We've really got them ready to go, but sometimes the difficulty is that it doesn't fit in the student's schedule. And we are proposing a new AP Pre-Calculus course for the fall. So we're hoping that that might be something for the students who are especially accelerated as juniors coming into Pre-Cal, be able to also take AP Pre-Calculus. We're also thinking that the other Pre-Calculus courses, the ones that won't be AP Pre-Cal, will be aligned with ECC and get SUNY credit if the students so choose that as well. And thank you very much for everything. And thank you very much for everything. Questions?
Just a comment regarding the collaboration between the middle school and the high school. I was speaking to a couple of students that were in eighth grade that went to your, the day. And it was interesting because they were worried the school was going to be canceled and they really wanted to check it out. And I was like, you really, you want to go to the high school and check out? And they said, no, they said, we don't know anything about high school. We don't know anything. And, you know, and they were talking about like, oh, my parents say I should do this, I should do that. And they said, we just want to go and see what it's like. I said, are you going to do this? And they said, we want to see for ourselves. And I just thought that was so mature. And then discussing with those same students afterwards, they were so, I don't know what they'll do, I didn't ask them that. But they were so excited that they were like in the high school, got to see what it was, and now they felt like they could actually make a decision. So I think that's just a really smart move on your part.
We were trying to do things not only about STEM, but for example, I made sure that the announcements, the VDTV was on because I wanted them to see, here are high schoolers that are talking to us and this is how, you know, home room is. They took the TV announcements. We took them down to the tech wing and it was the older students that, you know, brought them down. The teachers weren't involved at all. And the juniors and seniors, you know, brought them down and showed them around, showed them all the equipment, introduced them to Minister Wall. And, you know, they were very proud of their projects and they wanted to show off. So some of them, we had to send people down to bring them back because they were gone for so long. But it really, I can't, I mean, the kids were phenomenal. I mean, they did, you know, we're like, okay, do this, do this. And they would do anything. They literally would do anything.
Is this for sure you did that?
Yeah.
That's something that might be good also for the global leadership and for any of the pathways. Because the students in eighth grade, they have no idea, when you're in leadership, what is that?
Well, they get, they get this, like the spiel about it. They get, this is the information about it. But physically going to the high school and seeing it, I think it just creates a different image and a realistic image in their mind.
It does.
And it kind of takes some of the, you know, teacher and parent conversation about it. It grounds them in what's actually happening for, you know, soon-to-be freshmen.
Well, it started as just Ethan Hansen and I. Ethan is the AP Physics teacher for the sophomore STEM group. And I teach the Algebra II. So one day out of six, we have enrichment class. And the two of us, it is by far our favorite day, you know, period of the entire year, you know, every, once every cycle. And we come up with fun, you know, the Pringle Ringle, the, you know, different things that we're doing there, whether it's physics-related or math-related. Ethan, let's just bring eight graders up and show them what enrichment is like. But then everybody, it was great because, you know, Elizabeth McCarthy said, I'd like to do a chemistry demonstration for them. And sure, that'd be great. And then, you know, we had the computer, Heiser had computer programming. She had a great project. And again, six of the upper-class students, you know, taught them how to do it, so.
It was a great event for everybody.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Cassidy?
From the, I have a question, but on the group, from the perspective of a parent of a freshman in STEM, he thought it was pretty cool, too. Being able to share with the middle schoolers. So I'd say that all around, it sounds like it was an awesome experience.
And I don't know if they've told you, but we have instituted a STEM breakfast this year. So we've only had, we had one in the fall. We had this one with the eighth graders. So, you know, please come. The first one that we had, we were literally where the buses come into the high school, the eighth, the, you know, middle school kids were like looking in the window and like, so we were putting up signs, join STEM and you can join us. So we decided we better put the breakfast into their visit day, too.
So my question is about the lack of textbooks and the way that you've been, I guess, bridging that gap. Is that what you're hearing from peer districts as well, they're doing the exact same sort of things? Just really no solid solution out there?
There isn't. When Math in the High School became Common Core, there were a few different educators that need online programs. So we have, you know, different EMAT instruction. And so we started there our first year and we weren't really happy with that. And literally, the kids could watch a person do a video and, you know, we would have the resources that that person had. And it, it just wasn't awesome. So we just decided to do our own thing. With the textbooks, we have textbooks for pre-teen, AP Stats. I think those are the only three courses. So all of the other courses, it's teacher-created materials. But I've got to say, they're quite professional, teacher-created materials.
I was just thinking, we're so lucky that we have our teachers to create the materials. What's everybody else doing?
It is. It was, how many years has that been?
Well, since 2013 or 14 was when the beginning of Common Core. So we've been really having textbooks for Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II.
Can you?
Just about, you were talking about the decline in four years of math. Up to 75 students in AP Calc and now we're looking at a number of 29. And it impacts a lot of different things when you're looking at college and they want you to have a rigorous, you know, curriculum and show that you've taken rigorous courses. So it's obviously something that's of concern. What, in terms of, my question is specific, you said in six years, has this been just four, six years it's been declining? Is this just like a little blip that you see? I'm just trying to understand a little bit better those numbers.
I would say that when I did this review six years ago, we probably had approximately between 45 and 50 students in Calculus. Algebra, or I'm sorry, Precalculus, we had 120 students last year take the Algebra II Regents exam. 60 students sign up for Precalculus, which would be the next course. So for that big of a drop going from Algebra II to Precalculus, that's a big decline. You know, is it just a blip? Hopefully. But to be fair, we also have fewer students. You know, I mean, if we're talking 135 students graduating in a senior class now, that compares to 175 years ago.
So this is not percentages necessarily, but numbers. So it could be a combination.
It's a combination, I would say. And I'm really hoping that we can get some of these numbers back up with a number of things. First of all, them seeing that this is important for their colleges. A lot of the colleges who are not, because they are becoming SAT optional, a lot of the colleges are doing placement exams. And students, if they haven't had, I mean, we have some students that stop math after sophomore year. If they were accelerated in eighth grade, that grade counts in their three years of high school math. So we do have some students that stop after sophomore year. And then to turn around after two years or even one year without math and try to take a placement exam, you know, they could end up having to retake courses that they already took in high school.
That's a concern of mine. I really hope that as students realize how rigorous colleges look at their high school transcript, but also trade schools. Because it doesn't matter what trade you go into, you're going to need math. And if you have that gap, like you just said, it's really going to impact them. So I really, I'm concerned. I'm hoping that we are making, we are letting these students know how imperative it is for their future to be taking math all four years.
Accelerated program isn't to hurry up and get it over with.
It's to be able to do more. To focus on, as the students are accepted into Algebra. Out for them, this is what, you know, the general plan is. You know, you're taking Algebra II, but we'd like to see you continue on to Precalculus, AP Stats, AP Calculus. We've got all these options. It's certainly not that we're lacking the options. We really have.
The options, it was really incredible to see the multitude of pathways available to students. And a concern is often, once you start on a path, if it doesn't work for you, is there another option? And it was fantastic to see that there are. If this, this, but if not that, then how about this one?
And actually, I forgot to mention, when we're talking about eighth graders or seventh graders that don't get into the accelerated program, we do have another entry place. So if they arrive at the high school and are taking Algebra and then they do really well in Geometry as well, we do allow them and have a number of students that double up and take Algebra II and Precalculus in their junior year. And then they can choose between AP Stats and AP Calculus through senior year.
That's a great option for kids who come in from private schools as well.
Well, they've also maybe matured a little bit more since middle school. You know, it might be a student that's even. We do have that pathway as well.
And just in line with what we're talking about, making sure, I guess, that the communication to the families about the importance of continuing math. Because not only do we want our students to know how important it is, but obviously having our families be aware of that.
Mr. Rudson?
This is probably for Mr. Roberts more than, more than you folks, although you may know the answer as well. There was a change in your scheduling this year so that you have an additional period in the day. Am I correct, Mr. Roberts? You got rid of that early morning period and now you have, how many periods in the day?
Yeah, back to the normal A period.
No, back to the normal A period day, right. So that was intended to help students to be able to get more electives and to get their, get into the courses that they chose. So my question really relates to the students who are choosing not to take the fourth year of math. What are they doing? In other words, are they all excited about going down to, to the tech room or the art room or music? Or are they sitting in a study hall cooling their heels or are they going home early? So you can answer that, I think.
I can answer that the number of kids leaving early. Back in, you know, the days when we had limited classes to take and there are a lot of kids leaving early, we're not, we're not doing that anymore. It's down to singular digits of kids leaving early. And if you go to the common, the seven, three, eight period, there are very few kids there. So they're in classes somewhere.
They're in classes. They may not be taking math, but they're taking something exciting that they like. That's great. That's all I care about. Thank you.
That math's not exciting.
Well, you know, it's, when you visit those classes and you see, you know, in the, and I'm talking about not math and English, like, I'm talking about visiting the tech classes and the art classes and the music classes. You see a sparkle in their eyes for wanting to be there. And quite often, students come back like they come to you sometimes in, for extra work. They'll, they'll bug out of the study hall and go down to the tech lab or to, or to where, and hopefully to math. You know, so, yeah, it relates to all the classes. But I mean, it's, in my view, it's, the key to all of this is sparking that enthusiasm in the student so they want to be there. Then you won't have any trouble with them.
You've done a very nice job. I think Mary Beth did a great job showing the different pathways. So there's, there's not just one choice. And if a child is accelerating and they're, they're looking at a typical path to go through Precalc and then into Calc or Statistics as a senior, sometimes they get there and they're like, geez, I don't know if that AP Calc is the right one or the AP Stats, I'm a little nervous. So that Algebra in the Real World is kind of that in-between course. So they've done a really nice job developing those courses kind of to broaden that engagement piece. Because Algebra is something that we need to follow. Not everybody uses calculus every day, but Algebra, we do. You don't realize it, but it is. And so those kinds of opportunities have been developed over a period of time to respond
Well, the Geometry, too. That Geometry class, they do real-world activities. Anyone who works in a technological position can benefit from a course. Do we do trigonometry anymore?
It's part of Algebra II and Precalculus.
Oh, very good. Because I remember the first job I had, that's, they looked at my resume and they said, oh, you need to be able to do trigonometry to do this job. I said, well, I got an ace in trigonometry, so I was in.
It used to be called Algebra II and Trigonometry, the third level course. Now we've taken the and Trigonometry away from the name of it, but there is.
That's fine, as long as it's stuck in there, it's still important.
We don't have a lot of specific dollar amount requests in the, are you keeping the list? Mary Beth, how many STEM seniors do we have this year?
I think we're at eight. So of the eight, I've got four in one Calculus class and four in the other.
So have we found that the kids are dropping out?
They're dropping at different levels. I only have six in sophomore year. Of the six, one of them spent about a month with all three. So each STEM student takes three courses. So the sophomore level is Algebra II, AP Physics, and Principles of Engineering. And this particular student said, you know what, I really would rather art than Principles of Engineering. So she went down, she switched her schedule, but we kept her in the Algebra II STEM and the AP Business STEM, just because she really wanted to stay with those courses. And six kids is better than five.
There was an issue with, and this may have been before we went back to the A period, with some of the STEM kids having to decide between STEM or music.
Now, that's, that's been on your doubt pretty much. We really.
That has not been an issue.
And to be fair, the group that we have as sophomores started as nine as freshmen. And then, you know, we lost a few coming into sophomore year. You see them drop at different stages, I would say, right? I mean, there are a few that don't like the senior idea of taking AP Chemistry. There are a few that going into junior gear don't like AP Bio. Some of them just aren't tech-related. I would say that the majority of the courses, though, they can end up taking. It's just putting the whole STEM program together is the only way that you can end up with those three AP Science courses. And, you know, for example, the AP Calculus, they're blended into, you know, all of my students for AP Calculus are together.
Those that are already in are even more charged up after the open house.
Right.
Nothing like selling what you're already doing.
I know. Well, to be honest, they have more than, we just introduced the teachers and then said, here are our upperclassmen. They stood up and said their names and started giving like testimonial. Ethan Hansen stepped back and he's like, I hope this is okay. They were beautiful. They were just what they, you know, felt, what they liked, what they, you know, really enjoyed about the program. I think the eighth graders really got a feel for what, you know, they had experienced. So it was good.
More questions? Anything?
I do.
Oh, yes.
And we've tortured them long enough. This kind of hits a little close to home, but getting back to the textbook resource, kind of put the curriculum together locally. And somehow that does match up with the state tests of the students. I mean, how do you do that? I mean, it's just a communication with SCD or is?
No, within each course, there are certain units that we have to cover. There are standards that we have to cover. So for example, let me speak about Algebra II, which is, you know, what I've been doing for the longest. We have 13 units that we have to cover and standards that fall under each of those units. So we, between me, Lacy Yonkey and John Heisner, have built, you know, this is when we're teaching this unit, this is, this follows from this one. Math is pretty cumulative and consecutive. So it's hard to rearrange topics because they have to know this before they move to this.
Assessments will, they'll be able to recognize the questions and the answers.
Those lists of standards so that we know what the students have to be able to do.
Not the what, it's the how that they get to decide.
It's which examples to use for this particular topic. It's what activity are we going to do to, you know, help them understand and experience this topic.
Well, I just wanted to say, and you're looking at someone who writes a number of those questions for the Regents' Exam, so. So we've got quite an asset here.
Yeah, I mean, so I know, it seems like, so they're actually creating the test.
What's that?
They're actually creating the test. So they take the standards and then they roll it back and then they build their program to make sure that the kids are prepared.
Ms. Ritchie is a very valuable part of that statewide, as you said, influence statewide, which is very well-respected down there, too.
Well, we're also working now, I don't know if Craig has shared with you, on those performance level indicators. So for every standard, we're going to have five levels. If a student is going to perform at a level of five, this is what they have to be able to do for this standard. So it is drilled down that far. If their performance. If they're performing at a level three, this is what they have to be able to do for that standard. So for all the standards that we have, working with the state, we've been working on those performance level indicators. And those are going to be shared with all the teachers in the state. So we'll all know, like, my student should be working at a four level. So this is what they have to be able to do. When we're writing questions, Craig is giving me, you're writing this standard at a level four, you're writing this standard at a level two. So then that tells you what kind of questions are going on the Regents' exams.
Thank you for all that.
It's a lot of information that, you know, we've been able to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item.
Very big decision now. Do they go after the math or do they wait for the?
I just gave that segue as I did this.
I couldn't stand it.
Flower, are you on? When there's review.
Does anyone need a short?
Oh, are we sitting here in there?
Look at you, this is like Congress.
Yes, ma'am.
Or maybe I'll look in.
Tell me when you're ready.
Any surprises that superintendent needs to be here for?
Let's go fast. All right. So happy to be back to present our curriculum guide again this year. We sent an electronic version to you earlier today. And then I gave you, what I typically do is give you that one-page cheat sheet that highlights the major changes, anything other than, say, formatting changes in the guide. And I think, and it was great, Mary Beth was highlighting it, some of you were highlighting it too. I think as you flip through, giving our students, and especially we think of our eighth graders, the house weeks ago, we had, I think, 111 families there. But pointing out those quote-unquote pathways that they can work through over the four years with us, whether it's in English, math, social studies, or science, it's been a nice addition to our curriculum guide. And I think it's some of those now in elective areas as well. Business has added a few of those this year. A couple of other things I want to mention. This is the first curriculum guide in which you will not see mentioned of class rank because that goes away as of graduation this year. Planning a blue and white, for right now, blue and white gala, we're calling it, which will be a nice evening event where we're going to honor our seniors. It'll include all of our scholarships that have traditionally been given at graduation. That'll be at an evening event in the beginning of June. We've already notified our scholarship providers that that's what we're going to do. It'll be a nice night of those awards and recognitions, plus our department awards. And we're going to have desserts and drinks. And we're envisioning, sort of reimagining our auditorium and having this on the stage in the auditorium. So looking forward to that and all of you will be invited to that event. We're going to do that as sort of a soft entry into a new way to celebrate seniors and senior success, even though we have rank for this one last year. So rank is out of the curriculum guide. And then the last thing I just want to mention, as I was preparing this cheat sheet for you, I was looking back at last year. And one of the courses that we offered was the Beginning Guitar Class. And Mrs. Skowsky and I went down a month or two ago to the Beginning Guitar Class. And if you ever want to stop by the high school and just sit back and listen to, believe it or not, some really good music with beginner musicians, many who you don't see on our stage for chorus or orchestra or band, but are learning the guitar. And Paul Blackwell is doing an amazing job. I sat back and just listened to, I think it was Brown Eyed Girl. And he was able to slow it down a little bit. And he was verbalizing the chords, but he also had the chords listed on a smartboard as well. And there are 15 kids playing either guitars that we've provided to them or their own personal guitars. And it was beautiful. We have a teacher aide who's a talented musician and he was playing beyond the chords. I mean, he was playing the harmony. It was just, Chelsea and I spent the entire period there. I thought it was just going to stop in. So, but an example of one of those new courses that's taken off. And I think a number of these are going to follow for next year. So we'll jump into it if that's okay. Again, just highlighting these things. I think some of you are probably a part of the committee that is going to approve the Business Administration and Management CTE Pathway. I think some of you have said on that committee in the past. We had our building-based committee meeting yesterday, I think Jess, Jess isn't here anyway. Yesterday, and then I think there's a community committee that gives approval before it goes to the state for final approval. But I included the pathway because I wanted you to see what that looks like. And I like the changes on page 25. It's a much more streamlined approach for our CTE-approved credential. And it includes Blue Devil Design as the capstone experience in that CTE pathway. So I've put this in here, obviously it's pending approval. But Lisa Marchioli, who's been leading the charge, has been in communication with the state. They love, especially love the Blue Devil Design. I think that's a unique opportunity that we're providing our students. And they like this streamlined approach. So I think that'll be approved in the next couple of months, but want to highlight that. Also in the business section, with, again, living through the courses and what's working and what we want to revise. You might remember in the past, we've offered project management and we've offered an entrepreneurship class. The updated course is combining those two into one course called Project Management for Entrepreneurs. And if you want to look at a course description, that's on page 27. The next revision Mary Beth mentioned is the addition of the AP Pre-Calculus course. She also mentioned that that is included into the STEM program, but also a course that if a student was interested, they could enroll in that as well, even if they're not part of the STEM program. In science, I know I've talked a lot about this over the last year, but we're ready to jump into our Sustainable Agriculture course. And working very hard with Jeff Shelley and Ethan Hanson to develop this. I think they've done maybe five site visits. The unfortunate thing is no one near us has an agriculture program. So we've driven probably 45 minutes to an hour and 15 minutes to visit these schools. I just want to quickly highlight this program because it is going to change not only the course catalog, but it's going to change the appearance of the high school. So I want to get your blessing on that. Who's controlling here?
Here.
You got it? Thanks, Dan. So if you look at, and I think the best way to start is, if you don't mind, on page 55, Ethan and Jeff put together what I think is a really nice course description. So I'm going to just read it for you in the audience. "This survey-style class gives an overview of many different aspects of agriculture throughout the region with a focus on sustainable and environmentally friendly agriculture practices. Much of the class is focused on hands-on and outside activities with a major project being the outdoor farm and garden area. Projects and mini quizzes are used for evaluation. Topics may include livestock, maple syrup, vegetables and fruit, agricultural careers, fruit production and preservation, and the connections between people and their food supply. There will be an extra emphasis on sustainability within the home, school, and community, with many guest speakers, field trips, and local agricultural tours are planned throughout the year." So this is hot off the presses. This, Ethan put together the, what will be the sign out as, and love Blue Devil Design created. And that'll be at the entrance to our Sustainable Agriculture School Farm.
Now, what does it say in the green?
Yep. So it's Educate and Empower, Promote Local Agriculture, Encourage Biodiversity, Work With Natural Systems, Integrate Livestock, and Build Living Soil.
Where are you seeing that?
Gosh, okay, thank you. I thought I was going blind. A little bigger, not much better, Dan. Oh, all right. So again, we talk about hands-on learning. In our new agriculture lab, we'll have fruit, vegetables, poultry, eventually maple syrup production, composting and more, with that focus on sustainable and environmentally friendly practices. We are going to partner with Blue Devil Design to handle the business side of this and the marketing side. And we talked about field trips and the extensive outdoor time. We talked about what are our students doing last period? So Film Academy is last period. Blue Devil Design is last period. Sustainable Agriculture is last period. So it's a way to keep our upperclassmen around and engaged.
I love it.
So we've also put together a little five-year plan of the grounds. So this is Sweet Road. This is the main entrance into the main parking lot. And this piece of property Jeff and Ethan thought was best for a number of reasons, for protection, believe it or not, from the wind, also sun exposure. They thought this would be the ideal location on our property. Also, it's close to the school building. So we're not wasting time getting out to where we're working. So they've put together a five-year plan. I'll cruise through it. But you can see, at least initially, we're talking about fruit trees. We're talking about chickens, talking about composting, raised beds for vegetables, berries, and apples. And as you'll see, as I go through this, this will grow. This area up here, a lot of what we're talking about is regenerative farming. So you have portable chicken coops that are moved and fertilizing the land. And we'll get into more specific pictures of that as we purchase these materials. But you could see how they have a plan to grow. And we talk about high-tunnel greenhouses. We're talking about pastures for egg-laying chickens. A pollinator garden, a raw crop market garden, more berries, bee hives. Again, growing another high-tunnel greenhouse, more trees, more berries, more raised beds over the years. And then the ultimate goal is they'd love to have, and they've seen this in a number of places, again, a five-year plan, but the inclusion of a pavilion outdoor classroom and then storage as well. They've also incorporated a little walking trail. So again, five-year dream plan, but I wanted to show you that they've put a lot of thought and effort and we've visited a number of schools that they're really comfortable with this design. We are in the process of putting together a grant to the Educational Foundation. Hope to be on their schedule for their March meeting to at least support the initial startup cost and structures for the farm. Yes, we've already secured a grant through the FFA, Future Farmers of America. And there's also a couple other opportunities that we're aware of for grants as well that we're going to be working to secure over the next couple of months.
Would that be all fenced in, is that the orange?
Yes, the oranges, yes.
It happens during some of the harvest time that is during the summer.
Right. So a lot of what we're going to try and do will take place from September until June, July, whether that's chickens and the selling of the chickens, right? At unique times that it works for us. And then crops as well, learning crops that will be harvested either before winter or at the end of the school year. We have plans to bring a community together. So if there's need for community support, maybe over weekends or over vacations, between students and community supporters, we're hoping that that'll help.
Since there's a new director of Buildings and Grounds, he's willing to kind of take care of it over the summer.
That's why I had him sit so close to the.
Do you know a lot about chickens?
I know they, yes. A lot of fertilizer, a lot of fertilizer.
So Bill, will there be other animals besides chickens?
Right now, no. We're talking about meat chickens and egg laying. Now Ethan does have a dream of goats. He has a dream of a cow as well. But we've gone, Mr. Russ.
Get somebody to donate it.
And Mr. Russ went on a tour with us to, which one was that, Mr. Russ? Medina. And they had pigs, they had alpaca and chickens. So every school has a different focus when it comes to their ag program. Ours is on that regenerative farming and sustainability. That's going to be our unique approach.
How many students are you hoping to get into this?
We'd like to have a full section of 24. That's our goal. That's our goal. And then the rest I can probably get through a little bit quicker. In technology, again, I talked about how, again, living with courses and living with student interest and finding the best way to present these courses. You may remember we had a graphic design course and we had a production course, combining those into a graphic design and production course. If you read that course outline, it takes advantage of all of that state-of-the-art equipment that we have secured through your support and through the Educational Foundation's support as well, whether it's different screening, the 3D printers. The list of activities they have planned for this course is pretty exciting. Similarly, on page 62, our Manufacturing Systems course. That is a new course that is going to be taking full advantage of both our lathe and our mill. So those two new, really state-of-the-art machines that our teachers have spent a couple of years training on, we are now designing a course specifically to use those two pieces of machinery. And again, a nice course description on page 62. What you'll see in the course catalog is we've archived our CAD courses because we're going to infuse them into our Manufacturing Systems course.
One of the advantages of doing these combinations, then, as opposed to like kids taking graphic design and production as two separate courses, it's now combined. That opens up another space for them to take some other elective or some other piece of a program that sometimes is hard to fit in. So the redesigning of these courses and some of the combinations make a lot of sense because again, it just creates better opportunities for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Russ. And then finally, we have formalized the presentation for Blue Devil Design on pages 12 and 13. It's at the beginning of the course catalog because we would like to, again, trying to communicate these programs with our incoming freshman class. We've taken all of those unique programs and put them on pages at the beginning of the course catalog. And I like what both Mrs. Marchioli and Mr. Cray and Wall have done in presenting what Blue Devil Design looks like as a junior and as a senior and the graphics that they've incorporated in that recommended pathway. the graphics that they've incorporated in that recommended pathway is that students should take to be best prepared to take on the challenges of Blue Devil Design. So, that's a nice addition that I wanted to point out, too. Those are the, the additions or revisions to the course catalog, I do want you to know that we are still very, very interested in creating for our juniors and seniors the requirement of health and society, personal finance, and some sort of social, social-emotional learning experience, and, and, and looking to do that in, in, in a unique way of, of maybe 10-week seminars in both of those areas, that would be accomplished over the junior and senior year. Right now, it's, it's a combination of, of fine-tuning what those programs are going to look like, plus some personnel things that we need to work out, but I'm, I'm very hopeful that next year at this time, I'll come to you with a plan for a, a junior, senior requirement of all of our students to fill those seminars over those two years in, in some creative way that we have to, we have to figure out.
That always presents some challenges, too, because when we put a required course in place, then all the students have to do it, and then it doesn't make any sense to the choice, so it's kind of balancing.
And that's why we like the idea of, of the, the 10-week seminars, because it'll offer flexibility and alternatives, and allowing them to do that over their junior and senior year.
If you're ever going to make a, a requirement, these are the, these are the topics that are so important, it needs to be taught to the students when they graduate from high school.
Do we still have the, we had an elective component of the health, or no?
Say it one more time. Health and society, yes, Brian Lombardo is still teaching a section of that.
Questions on the course catalog?
So, I guess, a couple of questions, one on the sustainable farming, farming, where we're in the school district, we, in order to have chickens farm animals, you require permit from the, you know how many chickens we're planning on having and what the impact might be on the, the residential neighbors next to a chicken farm?
That's a good question.
There is, there are permit requirements for chicken, for the town as well, yeah. And it depends on the district, in residential districts, it is required, and typically what they will, would do is hold, you know, they would notify neighbors, hold public hearings, and, you know, get, get the input and, and make sure that the voice has been heard by the neighbors. Recognizing the fact that we're governed differently, and, and I understand that, I just wonder if it, if it might not be a rude awakening to folks to find out after the chickens arrive that they're getting, you know, 30 chicken neighbors. I don't know, I, I don't know the number, I don't, but I, I just put that out there as a thought and a consideration for the, the, knowing that there are neighbors, not many, right, that would be, that would be impacted by that location.
Across.
Right, 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 so I, I just, I, I throw that out there.
Well, we should investigate appropriate procedures associated with instituting this kind of a change. We may get some advice from other school districts or from the state, the, you're correct to point out that we're not governed by the municipal laws of the town of Aurora, but, but we should be sensitive to concerns like this, and we should develop a procedure to address those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is that if it makes sense for the town to do it, wouldn't it also make sense for us to, to do to some extent as well? And that's why I brought it up.
Good point, thank you.
My, my question with regards to Blue Devil Design is, I, so I follow on Instagram and I get the emails, I love, I, I just, I just think it's the coolest thing, and it's totally something I would have done. Can I, no. I, I think it's great that we've gotten our first manufacturing order, and I love that we're able to use those machines. As I see the, the information on like the merchandise and, and the awards and stuff like that, a thought that came to mind is that are we collaborating at all with the graphic design, the art wing in graphic design to do, to provide those services? Well, you know, my first thought was, would there be an opportunity to include graphic design, but I don't know necessarily if that fits, but a collaboration, an opportunity for those students to do a hands-on, real-life design that's going to show up? I, if that's not there, I would suggest it would be something to at least consider.
And that's something that, if, if we had a few more months, there was, I'm in conversations with a teacher who would like to do that. We had an industrial design course that you had approved in the, in the course catalog a few years ago, and I, I think that's something that, that, that you're going to see, whether it's formal or informally incorporated into Blue Devil Design, because the engineering of it, you know, when you go buy a product, when there's five to pick from the shelf, you're going to pick it up, you're going to maybe feel it, and a lot of that is the, that artistic eye that sets a product apart from its competitor. So, yes, we do realize that, and it's just trying to find the right way to incorporate it into the, into the program.
Another good suggestion.
When you put the designers and engineers together, that's when you get the really. Sort of like the, the elementary school kids with the monsters going to.
Yes.
This is a great category, need some more land, because the little space we have is, we can take it, either athletic programs and everything.
I like how you carved it out, just, just far enough, we're not touching on any field space for athletics.
Mister, Mister Hanson has his, his eye on the, the hill for grazing, just, just before the, the cross-country, the peak of the cross-country hill. We'll not touch the cross-country trail, but.
How much land is that?
I, I cannot tell you, we'll have to measure it out.
Well, the 100 acres that we have up there was a farm, and orchard, and so you're kind of, it, it was zoned agriculture for, forever, though we bought it. So, there you go.
It's time for everybody to watch The Biggest Little Farm. The Biggest Little Farm, there's a, there's a whole movie up there, it's, it's about a couple who reclaimed a farm in California and brought it back to life, regenerative agriculture, all kinds of stuff, how all the things work together. There's a new 30-minute version of it as well, like they go, I don't know, back to the farm or something.
Love it.
Yeah, it's good stuff. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, yeah, we're excited.